Good evening, welcome to the council meeting September seventeenth. Anyone in the audience needs amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll get those to you. Not seeing any, let's rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blush. Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? I just have one. Happy birthday, Councilmember Sapp.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
All right. Does the council have any board reports to share? All right. Are we ready for reading the consent agenda? Donna, will you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, I will. Vouchers numbered one, 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 four, seven, four through one, 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 five, zero, six, and E F T payment numbers six, two, four through six, four, zero, in the total amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, and bank drafts D F T zero, 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 one, seven, one, zero, D F T zero, 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 one, seven, two, four, D F T zero, 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 one, seven, two, six, through D F T zero, 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 one, seven, three, six, in the total amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Vouchers numbered one, 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 five, two, six, through one, 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 five, six, zero, and E F T payment numbers six, four, one through six, six, one, in the total amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Payroll warrants numbered three, nine, nine, five through three, nine, nine, eight, and one, three, two, four, three through one, three, three, four, seven. Warrants one, 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 five, zero, seven through one, 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 five, two, five, in the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Resolution number one, three, three, six dash zero, six, two, four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to accept one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars from the Washington State Department of Commerce for rail trail design. Resolution number one, three, three, eight dash zero, six, two, four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to accept two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the Washington State Department of Transportation for rail trail design. Minutes from the business meeting of August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, study session of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and the last consent item is the July financial status report.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, a second to approve the agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The council invites public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council, not an individual council member. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. Unreasonably disruptive conduct continues. You will be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, anyone sign up for general public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Dean Jewett.
Good evening, always a pleasure to be here. Just wanted to chat about, chat about quite a few different things. I wanted to make Mark aware, you know, we have a big pile of dirt down by the street, down at Front Street. There's been some cleanup that's been going on. Just have some concern, you know, that's Salmon Creek. We don't have any filtration set up there, but you know, if you have a contractor that's working on a project, you set up, you know, filtration for sediment. There's a big old pile of dirt there getting to work, and I don't understand why it's sitting there within six inches of the creek. So I'm just a little bit concerned and confused about that. Wanted to bring it to your attention. Online data, when you go look at Shelton, you know, Shelton's as safe as thirteen, thirteen percent of the rest of the cities in the nation. So obviously, we have a, we have a concern here. We had a report from G Costad that went over the calls that we have, how many we have, year after year. There was some incorrect data given last time about some thirty or forty percent reduction in calls and crime. Well, obviously, you can pull data and you can manipulate it however you want, but look it up. Friend of mine was downtown doing Pokemon. He was chased down by two individuals. They swung on him, never called in or anything. But I mean, is that what we want, safe for downtown? We have our people doing Pokemon, G or whatever it is, and they get swung on by individuals? Seems like it's not as safe as what we might think it is. Blocking sidewalks. They're going with it. There's a sidewalk ordinance impeding the flow of pedestrian traffic. There's a sidewalk across from the sheriff's department down by our lovely community lifeline that's been blocked day in and day out. The police have been there, the chief's been there, and still, you know, they, they move for a second and then it's blocked again. So what are we gonna do with that? How many violations this community lifeline is gonna be allowed before something is done? And I don't know what that number is. We have, you know, preparing for winter. You know, a lot of people, they get their wood in, squirrels get their nuts in, bears eat their berries. So what are we doing with our street population? Is there any plan for that? Or are they just gonna start going into all the alcoves and stuff like the movie theater? You know, movie theater people that run that, great people, there's a whole cardboard bed and aluminum blankets and stuff like that there for the heat stuff, all set up, all nestled up nice and tightly. R Vs with expired tabs, you know, all over town. We've got an influx of those. They go on Front Street, they move around from here and there. I don't understand why we don't do something about that. The city of Olympia, about as liberal council as you can get, they are passing an ordinance that states just everything that ours does. Obviously, we have to worry about what's gonna happen with the enforcement side of it. You know, is it gonna be enforced or not? Anyway, there you go. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dean.
Our next speaker is Susan Kurchoff.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Susan Kurchoff. I run the Youth Connection downtown. I wanted to just kind of do a little, I like talking about the Youth Connection, but I have a couple other things I want to talk about tonight. So first of all, we worked really hard to prevent chronic homelessness. I've been doing some research on some stuff. Our focus, we want to work on preventing them from becoming homeless, because forty-eight percent of the adults who are classified as chronically homeless state that their first time was before they turned twenty-five. Many of them were even before they were turned eighteen, have shared that. I've been doing research on why are we in the United States having so much issues when countries like Japan, Finland, Ireland, Denmark, even Israel and Costa Rica are so much closer to solving this problem? On March twenty-second, Reuters reported that more than six hundred and fifty-three people in America are homeless in twenty twenty-three. Those are humans, whether we, they have mental illness, whether they're suffering from drugs, whatever, they're humans. And we need to think about that. That's a twelve percent increase since twenty twenty-two. Diverse strategies are being proposed to combat this homelessness, while legislation and cities are passing ordinance banning camping on city sidewalks and parks and places, which I'm not saying isn't right. Don't hear me say that I don't think that we should do something, because it is kind of, you don't want it there. It doesn't look great. But on the same token, what are we doing to these humans? How are we helping them become better? There's problems everywhere. It's not just an ordinance. There's problems with mental health. There's problems. I can't tell you how often we put people in detox and get them in mental health help, and they show up on our door with a bag of drugs that we're supposed to help mitigate and help them figure out. I'm not professional to give them drugs, and they've not been taught how to take those drugs on a regular basis. So there's a failing system. So how did Japan do it? So I'll just tell you. First of all, I honestly believe one of our biggest problems we have is we don't have a place to put them. Where do we want to put them? They have to have someplace to go poop and pee. That's a fact of life. We don't have that. They don't have a home, so where do we put them? Japan, what they did is how they got, and I'll just tell you, you should look it up. They've done some really serious stuff. Because housing stock is more accessible in other, in other countries than ours. Unlike most Western countries, where building houses is very difficult because of many government rules, Japan decided to be more prudent and they removed some of those darn rules. And you guys all know those. Anyway, I'm not sure shopping cart regulations or increased laws will do much good when we don't have places to put them in affordable housing, and that's what we need to be focusing on, is how do we change the rules and get more affordable housing built in Mason County?
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Mayor, we have one person on Zoom. We have Dave Redman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Dave Redman. I'm a retired army officer, and I'm the program supervisor for the Shelton Veterans Village. According to the Department of Social and Health Services in their homes database, they have nearly a quarter million veterans registered for services. One report from that database went on to show that one in twenty-five veterans were homeless or unstably housed. The proportion of veterans experiencing homelessness or housing instability begins to increase with veterans ages twenty-five to thirty-four. It kind of peaks when veterans get to the ages fifty-five, sixty-four, and then drops again for veterans age sixty-five and older. And as an interesting point in this report, roughly seventeen hundred veterans were in permanent supportive housing. That's less than one percent of veteran population that's in crisis. And in an article in the Seattle Times, King County is reporting a thirty-seven percent drop in homelessness through housing, with less than six percent of those housed going back to their streets after receiving wraparound services and support in the housing program. King County officials say the model, which builds on longstanding relationships with the federal VA, local housing authorities, and nonprofits, shows that with the right resources and coordination, consistently shrinking the number of homeless population is possible. And if you remember the last time I presented in this forum, each person with stable housing cycles in and out of emergency departments less often, has fewer inpatient hospital stays, and requires less use of psychiatric centers, detoxification programs, and jails, which results in lower public costs and better health outcomes for individuals. At the Shelton Veterans Village, we follow a Housing First model, which is a proven model for addressing homelessness that prioritizes access to permanent, stable housing linked with services as needed. Housing First recognizes that stable housing is a prerequisite for effectively improving the quality of life. Once stably housed, our residents are better able to take advantage of those wraparound services to help support housing stability, employment, and recovery. And because federal, federal resources to address homelessness are scarce, it is critical that our communities use these resources effectively to serve as many people as possible. This housing program, it works. Every day I come to work and I see firsthand the benefits of supported living for our homeless veterans. Providing residents a hand up instead of a handout has enabled them to accomplish things that many of them thought were not possible for them to accomplish as individuals. The support of this city and this county have directly contributed to the success of this and so many other programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
We have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have two presentations this evening. One is a proclamation for honoring our first responders, and I'll read that. Whereas Shelton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of everyone residing in, everyone residing in and visiting our city. And whereas Shelton Public Safety Personnel, working in partnership with Mason County, Washington State, federal, and military agencies, are critical to keeping our community safe. And whereas Shelton Public Safety Personnel are the first to respond in an emergency situation, frequently going beyond their regular duties in their mission to serve and protect. And whereas the public's safety community is always readily available for answering the call for help to offering services that bring relief and comfort during the worst circumstances, as well as ensuring that people in Shelton are safe and secure. And whereas our public safety personnel are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of crime, fire, injuries through prevention, protection, education. And whereas Shelton Public Safety Agencies work cleverly to safeguard life and property and protect the residents and visitors, and stand up for the most vulnerable, even in the face of personal harm. And whereas the public safety community, daily duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices bring them the respect, admiration, and gratitude of those who serve and protect. Therefore, I, Mayor Arapunis, but to hereby proclaim, September eleventh, we're back dating as First Responder Appreciation Day. In Shelton, I urge all people in our city to join in a special observation signed, that'll be signed today. And also, the Lions Club would like to present a couple proclamations to our first responder, Fire Chief, and or Chief Costad from Shelton Police Department.
We have a couple of praying proclamations for you to hang on your wall in your office, and for, it was signed by Governor Jay Hensley in August, and we decided to be in line to make sure that you get the and understand that we are gonna remember nine eleven and our first responders for everyone.
Kathy, do you have more Lions Club members for a photo op in the audience? That'd be great.
Yes. Don't walk away. You need a photo.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Anybody like to make any comments to our two chiefs? Anyone like to make any comments to our two chiefs?
Good job, guys. Keep up the great work. Thank you for all that you guys do for our community, keeping us all safe.
It's great to support the city and us working together whenever.
I'd like to thank you as well, as we just passed September eleventh, and I was watching the news and watching all the recent stuff from, you know, that day. And not watching people run away from the, from the falling towers. I was watching firemen and police running towards the problem, and that just, to this day, gives me chills, and we appreciate everything you guys do. So, thank you.
I think when we look at heroes, there's really need to find people that are heroes of the police department and private department.
Very lucky to have you.
Thank you, guys. All right, now we have a report from Dwayne Wilson regarding Bluegrass in the Forest. You're gonna play a fiddle, fiddle when you're done with this, right? Are you gonna play a fiddle when you're done?
No, I play a big sound, and it's in my car. We have a jam after. We have a jam on in forty-eight, forty-eight has been going like sixteen years every, every other Tuesday, so. Anyway, it's fun, like acoustic music, but I can focus. For those of you not familiar with Bluegrass in the Forest, it's, we advertise it as a three-day festival, but we have people that come in on Wednesdays and don't leave until Monday by noon. I actually kind of chase them out of there to get them back to the soccer park. We're at a South Basin used soccer. We had to move from the high school, like, a lot of the spaces we used for our visitors, that taking up the buildings, partying, this and that, the others, so. We were forced to move to the, excuse me, to the soccer park, and it's been good for them. Bluegrass, we, we may have been criticized for the use of their property, and most of our folks, like, some of them more my age like that comfortable auditorium, but most of them like the outdoor. We bring in two stages, a semi, a forty-foot semi, curtain van, and we have six bands over the three days. One, one show Friday night, two Saturday, one Sunday. During the day, we have workshops and all of the, on Saturday, we have workshops for all the instruments and vocal and bands. And then we also have those on Sunday, and Saturday, we have open mic and open stage for a lot of the attendees and many kids programs. They, they get together on Saturday mornings, and then they open the show on Friday night or Saturday night. Then on Saturday night, we also have a midnight dance. Our shields are over at ten. So we have a dance from midnight till, from ten till midnight, and then at midnight, the Boy Scout trip, we sponsor, smoked hot dogs, and we give away hot dogs, two hundred and, two hundred and twenty-five hot dogs in like about twenty minutes, so. And so it's a fun thing, and then we bring a lot of people down. I think there's twenty-one hundred here. We have fourteen hundred and thirty-one that came from forty-five miles or more. I think it was a hundred and fourteen or whatever the number is from out of state, not a country, and that included are here, oh, from Canada, Hawaii, Colorado, California, Arizona, New York, Pennsylvania, New Maryland, and Iowa. And then we also have, I think it was two hundred and twenty-four campers on site, those from Wednesday to Sunday. And then one thing that I've, we've been really trying to get younger. You see a lot of our things, the same old stuff, guys my age there. We're trying to get younger. And we actually have three families. We have a ninety-dollar ticket, two adults and four kids. We have one come from Arizona, one from Colorado, and one from California. And I, I saw our, the slips that we, that they report back, and they definitely came and enjoyed the kids program, brought their dog. And so that's not what we're charged to do. I'm on the L TAC, and we're charged to bring people in from out of state, you know, to stay here and spend some money, so. I don't know. Do you have any questions? I give, if there's a cover there, they're pretty much covered. Everything I can say.
Any comments for Dwayne?
Thank you for the camping, the food, and the music. Thank you so much.
I thank you, and I thank all the presenters that, if it wasn't for volunteers like you and groups, groups out there that do some of this stuff in town, we wouldn't have this stuff, our parade, and our bluegrass, and our oyster fest, and just all the wonderful things that we have in town is because of volunteers like you. I mean, you and your grandkids were heavily involved in helping save our park, painting the train, and your grandson was crawling through that train like, I couldn't believe he even got in and out of that train, some, some of it, but that. He definitely would, yeah. But appreciate everything you do and your groups as well. So, thank you.
I love that we have events like this in our community, because I feel like it really highlights the diversity of our community. Our community is not a one type of person community at all, and I think events like this really highlight that, and I think that's really important to show the rest of the world that Shelton and Mason County, we have a lot of different types of people with a lot of different interests, and so thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you for the council for your support over the years, and support of this of all nineteen years that we've been in the festival, so. We really appreciate it. Did I mention that it was the Christmas Town bonus?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Put on this word, it's not his, we and Mark, it's Mark and I are gonna say, but anyway, there's, there's a lot of artwork and people there, too, that made a lot of appearances, so. I forgot to mention it, so.
Well, thank you, Dwayne.
Made it in three minutes.
Yeah. All right. There are no business items tonight, so we're on to our action agenda. Director Jay Hill has information for us about shopping cart regulations.
Jay's remote tonight, so he should be coming up here in a second. There it is.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me remotely tonight, and I apologize for not being there in person and under the weather, but this is an ordinance that we discussed at the business meeting two weeks ago, and at that time, we discussed shopping cart regulations. There was a kind of three-fold approach to it. One was a set of regulations that had to be, or that had to be adhered to by the retail establishments, and then there was another section that was about the criminal activity, about removing or being in possession of the carts. And then the remaining portion of it was kind of fees and definitions and things, and so council directed staff to essentially create a two-tier fee system. So there's one fee that is one hundred dollars per cart, and that's if the retail establishment has complied with the approved security measures listed in the chapter. And that covers staff recovery time for picking up the cart from wherever and returning it, or coordinating to dispose of it. And then there was, at the council's request, a two-hundred-dollar cart, which does cost recovery, but also has a, you know, more of a penalty associated with it. And so we made that change, but generally, the rest of the ordinance remain untouched. So with that, we're recommending approval, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe a reading of ordinance number two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, eight, two, four?
Ordinance number two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, eight, two, four. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adding chapter eight point three zero to the Shelton Municipal Code relating to regulation of shopping carts.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, eight, two, four, as presented.
How many are questions?
I just wanted to make sure that we know that this is a measure to keep shopping carts in place and not a measure to take away shopping carts for people who already have them. And if that becomes an issue, that this becomes something where there's a bounty system, I for sure will come back to the council and make sure that this resolution gets, we consider them. That's all.
Okay, anyone else? It, well, it's absolutely no secret that I've, I've had a heartburn over a lot of this ordinance since we've been talking about it for the last couple months. This really only affects three of our top sales tax collectors in the city. And we're gonna punish them for, for somebody else's bad behavior. I, I don't think that's quite right. I had the same issue with with graffiti ordinance. We're making, gonna find somebody if they don't clean graffiti that somebody else did to their property. So it gets me heartburn. Also, you know, this is, they're probably in our top five B and O taxpayers that we just asked to double their, their B and O tax, you know. I talked to a Walmart manager yesterday, and they're paying fifty-one thousand dollars a month in B and O taxes, he indicated. I'm not sure if that's B and O straight or B and O and sales, but he had said fifty-one thousand dollars a month on his P and Ls. I was willing to go along with the locking wheels, the poles, even though I believe it is government overreach for us to tell people how to, how to run their business. And, you know, are we going to find a restaurant for a dine and dash because they were allowed to eat without paying first? Are we gonna find a store for shoplifters because they don't lock the doors, prevent it? I mean, where does this stop? I just, I think it's wrong. I, there's an ordinance that deals with shopping carts, and it's nine, eight, dash, five, six, dash, two, seven, zero, that deals with shopping carts. I don't think it does any good to find someone who can't pay it either. So, I mean, can we look into maybe, instead of a fine for somebody who takes a shopping cart, maybe a community service, and they're out cleaning our parks and in our areas and our railroad tracks and wherever else we need them on our trails, instead of a fine, because obviously, people who take these carts aren't gonna be able to pay them. But there is an ordinance out there. There, it is a misdemeanor already with the state, so duplicating that doesn't make any sense to me. You know, I think that we should probably go back to the drawing board and look at this again. I don't think it's right. I'm gonna stand up for our businesses. I don't care if they're small or big. I think that we should probably look at this a little bit further. With that, we all know on it. Any other comments? We have a motion, a second to approve the shopping cart ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And see what's next. Jay is still on with a resolution for building code service pool.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. So as I mentioned a couple weeks ago, this resolution establishing an on-call building services pool is essential for our operations. It gives us a relief valve at a time when we get a lot of applications in, or when we have staff, vacation, turnover, illness, things like that. So currently, we have one company that we're using one of these contracts with, and this will expand that to four, which gives us a lot more flexibility with some of the development that we see coming down the pipeline. So again, staff doesn't have any changes and is recommending approval of this resolution, and which will establish an on-call building services pool and direct the city manager to execute contracts with the four selected firms. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, am I supposed to have a public comment?
I'll speak.
Sign up, please.
Oh, my only concern about that would be, so, and it basically goes right into us with our ability, what we're doing. So we had our permits. so, uh, and it basically goes right into us with, with our building, what we're doing. So we had our permits in two thousand eighteen and we were going off into two thousand fifteen national codes. Those permits expired, then we got bumped up to the two thousand eighteen codes. And so then we dealt with code pros, we dealt with Sean, we dealt with code pros. Now we're dealing with the new individual. So every time you do that, somebody has a different interpretation of a, a, a reading or, or, or a portion of that. One thing that I do not like as a contractor is when you end up having a correspondence with an inspector or, or a company and then they make statements that I would like to see, or it would be nice to see. No. What has to happen is is it's, it's either in your prescription and on your plans. Uh, or it's not. It's not an interpretation by the different individuals. So I've seen it happen, you know, numerous times. So if we go down that road, I understand it because sometimes it can take a while to get an inspection. So I don't want that. So going to three or four, I'm all, all for it. Just make sure that when we sit down and we have that conversation with them, that everybody is on the same page when it comes to the terminology and/or interpretation of what those are. Hopefully that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else? We're reading the resolution number one three four seven dash zero eight two-four.
Resolution number one three four seven dash zero eight two-four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, establishing an on-call building services qualified pool list and authorizing the city manager to contract with the selected firms.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number one three four seven dash zero eight two-four as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mark, when we have in, in that comment, when we have, um, somebody on a building project, do we have the same, will we have the same person that will follow through with that project? Because that does make a little sense to me that one person should follow through.
Well, yeah, some, some of the contracts don't offer inspections necessarily. It might just be plan review. It depends on the firm and it depends on the project itself. If it's residential projects, typically it's the inspector, the, the, the plans examiner and the inspector carry the project through. It's a commercial project, it may, it may vary, but it's, it's, it's working as a team, knowing that the inspector um, knows the intent of, of the plans examiner's review and the notes and it should be, I, I can agree. It should not be, here's what I like to see, or here's what you, you should do. This is the code references to the code section. Here's how that applies to this construction project.
Thank you. In the last couple of years, we've been kind of tightening up those codes so they make more sense.
You know, the building codes, building codes, you know, and not just building, right? Because it, it.
Building, fire, plumbing, electrical and everything else too. So it's quite involved. That's why we hire
individuals that are qualified, have their certifications to be able to through that process. We're hoping that we alleviate some of the burden on one consultant at this point as well as our current building inspector. And when they move up the ladder, if you will, and get their certifications, they take on more, more of this workload. We hope to spread that out and, you know, and offer better customer service.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. We've got a lot of things in the hopper and we definitely need the help. So we can't find anybody to, to come in. I, we definitely need to hire out.
We understand. Time is critical to these projects. We, we wanna, we wanna be responsive to that and make sure these applicants can uh, get moving on their project as quickly as possible. That's why we have the potential of four different consulting firms to make sure that we can find the best fit for, uh, that turnaround time for that project.
Right, thank you.
With that being said, um, as time is important, one concern could be, it, it used to be when you would call the city and, and you'd say, okay, can you give me a roundabout when my inspection will be? They'd say you're sixth in line, whatever. So you know, you're not first thing in the morning. You might be in the afternoon. But with this, they'll just say on that day. Well, that makes it kind of hard for construction when, and maybe they have somewhere else, they have to be a different part of the day because sometimes you work on multiple projects at a time. So is there any way we could say, could you give them a four-hour window versus an eight-hour window? I don't, I don't know if we can put parameters, but I just know it's really hard for builders.
I'll, I'll let Director Hill respond. I know we've tried that in the past, but also, yeah, you know, we try to accommodate the projects too and they, the inspection could take a half hour longer, an hour longer too. We don't want to cut those short. So we have to have that leeway, like you said, the four-hour windows or something to that effect.
Right.
But we certainly try to, to the best of our ability to give a notice
Right.
or contact the applicant or the, you know, the, the property or the contractor if we're running.
Right. Because it, it used to be like if you were number one on list, you knew you should be there first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
And you could schedule something else for the afternoon. And you knew if you were number eight on the list, you'd probably be last in the day. You could schedule something else in the morning. So, um, some sort of would be nice for that, just a little bit of timeline. And I'm just afraid when we're contracting out, which I think we should do this. Um, I'm just afraid that we're gonna lose that.
Uh, if I can add to that, and, and I, I do want to respond to that because it's, it's very important and that's part of why we're trying to spread it out with more firms. Um, we've been on our back heel since, uh, February, essentially, when everybody submitted applications trying to vest under the previous code and it gummed up the works with us at a time when we were trying to hire. Uh, gummed up the works with our consultant that we brought on, um, who had, had worked in the city for a very long time, had a lot of experience. Um, and so, uh, you know, uh, the customer service hasn't been at the level that I would like to provide, but we've been doing the best we can under an extraordinary volume of permits with a shortage of staff. And, um, I would like to get back to, you know, the four-hour window or, or better. Um, our building inspector, uh, is on the path right now to receive his residential plans examiner certification and will be um, a lot more hands-on. And we've been doing on-the-job training, trying to, to build up his skills, um, since we hired him last month and uh, so we're, we're building that back and we're trying to achieve the level of customer service that you're describing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, did we get a motion? I don't remember. No, we need a motion. No, we have a motion. We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution one three four seven dash zero eight two-four as presented. We have a motion, right? I thought so. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Our last act, our last action item is a resolution for the library deck project. Park and Rec Supervisor Jordan Crumples has detailed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing back to you tonight the library deck project. It's been a minute since it's came to your attention, so I'll give you a recap real quick. Um, it'd be the removing of the existing waterproof membrane, servicing on deck and the wood railings. Um, and any, uh, rotted areas that come with the deck and then the alternate bid would be doing the side, east and west side decks, you know, taking care of the railings for that, pressure washing the platforms, uh, redoing the fencing that borders the underneath area. Um, and replacing all of that to new, new waterproof membrane, steel railings, and then, yeah, the updates on the side decks. Um, we originally went to bid on this project back in June and unfortunately did not receive any bids for the project. So we ended up just going out for bids on the small works project, our small works roster, excuse me. And got two additional bits and we ended up going with United Home Builders with the lowest bid of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, their bid would cover the main deck and the alternate bit of the side decks. Um, and we're also looking to waive the three-touch rule on this tonight to spend, give the all-in-one project to be behind on what we originally wanted. So we're just looking for approval tonight and let me have to answer any questions.
Most of us were grant funded, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Uh, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
We were reading the resolution number one three three nine dash zero six two-four.
Resolution number one three three nine dash zero six two-four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with United Home Builders for the completion of the William G. Reed Library Deck Project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the three-touch rule and approve resolution number one three three nine dash zero six two-four as presented.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have any comment on this? Anybody have any comments? Sorry. Your motion is second to waive the three-touch rule and approve the resolution number one three three nine dash zero six two-four as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now at our manager report. Mark, do you have a report for us tonight?
You know, just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Um, after last week's Zoom meeting, we, or hybrid meeting, we made some, made some changes. We now have some more specific controls uh, available to us. So we're taking measures to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Uh, we're researching how we can progress forward. I know I talked to a couple of council members today about, um, about the future of hybrid meetings and what, what we can look forward to. And I'm happy to look into that a little further if the council so chooses and get some options. So, um, the city clerk and, clerk and I have been, uh, it's been on the front of our minds certainly, um, since last week. Um, I'm recommending the council's approval of, uh, cancellation of next week's study session. We originally had the pavement condition index, uh, report scheduled for, uh, September twenty-fourth. Uh, we're looking at moving that into October, um, on the heels of the next study session, which will be specifically the transportation benefit district. We talked about that budget. Uh, study session, uh, to bring that back, educate the council a little more, discuss, um, what the transportation benefit district does, what it means and the projects that have been included, um, in the what, eight and a half years or so of its lifespan, uh, and, um, and, and then how we move forward with the potential of putting that on the ballot in twenty twenty-five. Most of what will be considered, if that is extended, will be driven by that pavement condition index report. So it'll tell us the condition of our streets and what will be prioritized for future improvements that the transportation benefit district would help pay for. So we believe that getting those closer together would be more appropriate for council. So with your approval, we, um, since we don't have anything else queued up, just cancel next week's study session.
Does anybody minds having one less meeting, do we? I don't see anybody arguing with you on that.
Uh, and the last thing tonight, you'll see that the financial, uh, report was in the consent agenda. Director Giddens is the, off of the WFBO conference in, in Yakima this week. So we added a financial status report to you or consent agenda in, in this, um, briefing packet. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out and make sure we can answer them.
That is, so does anybody have any desire to have city manager look into the hybrid options for meetings? Sounds like, yes.
Entertain the idea of, uh, going back to phone calls and getting rid of Zoom. I know it's not required for us to do Zoom and after the way that happened, we don't need to have another incident like that. And if someone could just call in and be on speakerphone, I think that provides a lot less issues and potential for, uh, things like that to happen again.
Do, and do we want him to look at maybe, um, options where we don't, uh, where we pre-screen people, stuff like that, or?
Well, if they're on the phone, we'll hang up on them, you know? If they're not on the Zoom screen, where all of a sudden we get to see interesting things that we didn't want to see.
There's some great information through municipal research services. Uh, we've looked at that a little bit and they have examples of policies that other cities institute. So I think we can bring back a couple of options that, uh, that can be considered by council and best meet our needs with our staffing levels and our technology that we have available to us as well. Um, that certainly, um, is something to consider, um, without investing in, into specific technology and utilizing this technology we have, um, how we can best not only serve the council and the community, but be transparent at the same time and inclusive to anybody that wants to participate in our meetings. We need to provide, um, accommodations for those that could not participate here in person. That can be met several different ways, whether that's comments in writing, uh, phone calls, emails, get through, uh, uh, Zoom or like platforms as well. So, um, we'll develop a couple of ideas and options, um, for council to consider and bring that back to you.
Sounds great. Right. Okay, does council have anything else from city manager first? And do we have any new items in discussion? All right, then our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October first at six PM. We've canceled our study session for the twenty-fourth at six PM. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-four PM.